Welcome to the February 1st Board of Education meeting. And with that, we rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. LeVak, can I?
Come on. I'm sorry. I don't think I was on. Mrs. LeVak, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Levak?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds? Mrs. Raciyo?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Thank you. I feel like a fish out of water. This isn't our normal place and I, it's unsettling. Okay, we are creatures of habit. Student board reps, we'll start with Lyman Hall. Audrey Larson, come on up. How are you, Audrey?
Good. How are you?
Good.
There's been a lot of exciting things happening at Lyman.
Do share.
The Culinary Arts and Hospitality Program is launching a new program called Pure Fresh, which is a food program that will give components of an easy and healthy meal for people to take home. The culinary program has also launched their new website. The debate team has begun meeting, starting with their spring program. Boys basketball had their senior night yesterday. Boys hockey won against JBWA with a score of seven to five. The boys swim team won against Foreign Law, a hundred to eighty-three. Our girls' basketball team made the SCC Tournament and they won their game fifty to thirty on their senior night. Girls' basketball team has had their pink night on January thirty-first, which helps to raise money for the Sisters Project. The hockey team won the SCC D3 regular season title. They will be competing in the SCC Tournament, starting next Wednesday night. The cheer team will be competing at their mercy competition Saturday morning at ten a.m. And the state competition will be on March third. Every Monday, we've been running our Mindful Mondays program, in which students learn mindfulness and breathing techniques to reduce stress. Boys indoor track finished sixth in the state. Our student support section for games, Wow Bob, has been coming out to our hockey games and cheering our players on. Our Best Buddies chapter had their successful fundraiser at Chipotle on January fifth. Best Buddies Awareness Month is coming up in March and our chapter will have a weekly event in Spirit Day. Rumors, our school play was a hit on February seventh and eighth. Our sophomores will be doing Credit for Life on February twenty-sixth and they can explore their future careers and how to budget. Our Unified Sports Team will be having their Penguin Plunge, in which participants run into the Crystal Lake in the cold to raise money for the Unified Basketball Team on March second. And I have flyers for the board. We would love it if you could come.
So I don't have to plunge?
No, no.
I just have to come? Okay. I want to be clear about that. Okay.
The Unified Sports Team is also having a sneaker drive where they can earn money for their team. And their game was on January fifth and there was a lot of fun. Our vivacce came out to sing the National Anthem. The National Honor Society will have their induction ceremony on March twenty-eighth. May twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third, we will have our Ag Sciencere, which you are also welcome to come to. The band is currently getting ready for their Disney trip in April and beginning to work on the music for the parade. And Student Council is currently working on updating their bylaws. And I have flyers about the Penguin Plunge for you.
Of course you do. Thanks, Audrey. Great job, as always. Okay, from Mark T. Sheehan. Marissa, come on up. I'm sure there's a ton going on at Sheehan, too.
Yeah. Okay. This past month has been very busy in sports for Sheehan. All of our winter seasons have concluded or are concluding this week. Every winter team qualified for postseason play, which is a major accomplishment. We also have had successful senior nights for every sport, with the last one being tonight in boys swimming with their meet against Lyman Hall. On February eleventh, Sheehan held the basketball doubleheader against Lyman Hall, where we won both games. The cheerleaders showed unity at halftime by performing together. In girls' basketball, senior captain Olivia Robles scored her one thousandth point in a recent game. She is the tenth player in Sheehan basketball history to achieve this accomplishment. She currently has over twelve hundred points. Both the boys and girls' basketball teams will be competing in the state tournaments over the next few weeks and we are looking forward to supporting them. On Saturday, our hockey team beat Lyman Hall five to one, with two goals from Joe Raciyo, two goals from Luke Festa, and one goal from Anthony Romano. Sheehan Cheering competed at the SCC Championships and their next competition is next weekend at the CIAC Cheerleading Competition. The indoor track team sent many members to state opens this past weekend and concluded their season by resulting in breaking many school records. The Connecticut Allstate banquet were held, where Sheehan had four football players be recognized: Terrence Bogan, Weston Turzy, Luke Olet, and Jake Smith. Sheehan also had one soccer player, Olivia Dubuck, be recognized. Former Sheehan girls' soccer coach, Coach Murphy, was presented into the Connecticut High School Coaches Association. Looking ahead, spring sports are set to start on March sixteenth. On February fourth, juniors concluded picking their classes. February fourth through February eighth, Sheehan held a counselor appreciation week. On February eighth, the drama students held Titans on Broadway, where many of the individuals sang as a fundraiser for their upcoming show. On February eleventh, the sophomore class started their course selection for junior year. On February twenty-sixth, our sophomores will be going to the Credit for Life field trip, where they will get to see expenses and management skills. For the first time ever, we combined advisories to help build collaboration, build mentors, and to bring the different grades together. Seniors are paired with sophomores and juniors are paired with freshmen. We will have our Spring Dance on April sixth and on March sixth, we will have a military fair during lunch, where students can learn about the different branches of military. Our spring musical, Cinderella, is going to be performed March seventh through the ninth. On March eighth, we will hold our Spring Blood Drive. On March twenty-sixth, the Sheehan Hall of Fame introduction will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, a lot going on. Great job. Okay, presentation and awards. Dr. Menzo.
Tonight, what we wanted to do was invite two of our students who were slated to speak at the Martin Luther King Junior Ceremony, but unfortunately, that was canceled due to inclement weather. And unfortunately, due to scheduling in the town, they were unable to reschedule. But we felt it was important to have our students share because we know how important that day is to our community, our nation, and also, we know how hard they work in preparation for this. So we'd love to have had the Sheehan chorus here, but we know that they're in all different places and they're also rehearsing for Cinderella, which will be coming up in a few weeks. So at this time, though, I'd like to call up first Natalie DiDomenico to have her come up and share her essay and reading.
Welcome, Natalie.
Thank you. And thank you for having us, by the way. Martin Luther King Junior's words were specifically relevant in the context of the Civil Rights Movement of the fifties and sixties, but they will always maintain relevance in our society today. Dr. King once said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." This holds true under any circumstance in regards to oppression of all kinds. Until people, people like Dr. King and people like you and me, stand up for what they believe in, nothing will change. If Dr. King was not vocal about the things that truly mattered, nothing would have changed. Dr. King, or when fear overtakes strength and dedication to valuable causes, the oppressed are lulled into a belief that injustice cannot and will not end. But that is what makes Dr. King so special. He believed that everyone deserves just treatment, identified in the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. All men are created equal, regardless of their color, ethnicity, sexuality, and appearance. And that's where Dr. King's message is still as relevant as ever. Because in the same way that Dr. King had a dream that blacks and whites could live in harmony, I have a dream that all men and women are created equal. Across the world, injustice still exists, both in terms of race and gender. And if there's one thing that we can learn from Dr. King, is that silence truly does end worlds, because silence favors the oppressor. As Dr. King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." And if we forget that and allow any oppression to continue existing without counteraction, then nothing will change. Sometimes it takes a little bit of courage to solve what truly matters, not silence to encourage it. Thank you.
And now I'll invite up Jason Myers-Hur, who's also from Mark T. Sheehan High School, who's going to present his essay.
The world in which Americans currently live is a world unlike any other that has existed in the American landscape thus far. It is a post-slavery, post-segregation world that is indebted to the valiant and passionate campaigning efforts of people like Dr. Martin Luther King Junior that created change. No longer is it a certainty that the country is fundamentally broken in its principles and laws. By law, all people of differing races, no matter what their nationality or skin color, are accepted and included under the same rights and privileges once reserved for white men. Immense quantities of change have graced this land since the peak of the civil rights battle in the nineteen sixties. However, beyond the surface-level equality of the United States, there still lies a question. Has the United States and its people eliminated racism and injustice on an unorganized and social level? King said that genuine freedom cannot be celebrated until we let it ring from every village and every hamlet, from every state and every city. It is debatable whether the bell of freedom has been cast and rung in all possible and necessary locations. It is easy to visualize peace when it is suspended in the light of the world. The darkness is where injustice still lurks and plots its coup against the freedoms of the nation. In the vast cities of New York and Chicago, among other places, for every bright, shining city street bursting with life, there is a rundown ghetto or backstreet where both families and individuals are battered down to their knees by the blows of history and the inescapable chains of poverty. There is still work to be done in order for this country to endure as a symbol of opportunity and equality. The United States cannot depend entirely on its victories of the distant past in order to sustain its integrity in the present. King said that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice anywhere. Not until racism, an inherited disadvantage based on race, is entirely eradicated, can this nation rest its head and sleep under the sky of an equal and opportunity-rich landscape. Thank you.
So I think you could understand why, after hearing both of those, why I felt it was important that the rest of the community hear something that was meant to be heard last month, but unfortunately, because of the weather, was unable to be heard at that time. So I want to thank both the students and their families for their support. I want to thank Mr. Zacco for coming also as principal to support them this evening. This is, again, a ceremony that I've come to love and appreciate for the ten years that I've been here and I wanted to at least bring a piece of it to the community as well as our board. So thank you for allowing us to do that tonight by being here. It was really, truly meaningful. But I don't know if there are other board members who have comments or anything they'd like to say.
Mrs. Purcell.
I just want to say, as past students, I'm so proud of you and that you just really inspire all of us. I mean, to have our youth be like this and to really understand what's going on in the world gives us a lot of hope. Thanks.
I want to also echo Dr. Menzo's sentiments. I usually attend that event and it was a real disappointment for me when it got canceled. And so I do want to say thank you for taking the time and sharing your poignant thoughts this evening with us and we really, really appreciate it. And I'm glad Dr. Menzo thought to include you in our meeting tonight and share, you know, your message because as Mrs. Purcell said and as Dr. Menzo said, you articulated it beautifully and it's inspiring for all of us. So thank you so much for taking the time. Really, really appreciate it. Great job. Okay, we're good? Okay. Welcome, Mr. Reynolds. I know you had a prior engagement, so we're glad you made it. Any questions from the audience? Any questions? As I always say, I know our meetings are riveting, but if there is an opportunity that you might want to leave, this would be an awesome time to consider exiting, but otherwise, we welcome you to stay. Beyond that, can I get a motion to go into executive session for items E1, Discussion of Acceptance of Retirement; E2, Discussion of Acceptance of Resignation; E3, Discussion of Acceptance of Leave of Absence; and E4, Discussion of Approval of High School Coach?
So moved.
Okay. Good luck with that. I have a first and second. That's all that matters. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries and we're in executive session. Okay, we are back. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept our consent agenda, items seven point one through seven point one three?
So moved.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. And as a result, item eight, we have no items removed from the consent agenda correspondence. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, we'd like to thank Choate Rosemary Hall Foundation, Inc. for the donation of a variety of computer equipment valued at thirty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars made to the Wallingford School District. And we also received a thanking note from Thelma and Carol Bunn.
Great. Thank you. Committee reports. Item ten, starting with ACES.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Levak.
The ACES Governing Board met on February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The minutes of the January two thousand and nineteen meeting were approved. Under the Executive Director's report, the status of a proposed lease with Gateway Community College for the North Haven campus property to house the Wintergreen Magnet School continues to be discussed. ACES Administration met with the state to discuss this option and a timeline for the signing of an agreement, which, if approved, is slated for late March. The Leader Hill Building project is progressing with the building reported to be enclosed now. The Governing Board approved the filing of the fiscal reports subject to audit, the early Head Start monthly reports, and the Human Resources Report. Carol Bunk, Director of Human Resources, also indicated that ACES will offer afternoon sessions for mandated training, such as OSHA abuse and neglect, suicide prevention, et cetera. Under new business, the Governing Board approved a tentative agreement with the Administrators Association. The tentative contract consists of a one point five percent increase with step in the first year, followed by a one point two five percent increase with step in the second year and the third year of the contract. The Governing Board also approved the ACES internal school calendars for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. Under old business, the Governing Board approved policy five one four four point one, Restraints and Seclusions. The Board reviewed for a first read policy fifty-nine fifty slash forty-nine fifty, Parent Choice Lottery Preferences. It was noted that Hamden students may not exceed fifty-five percent of the population at WHIMS. It was also noted that Meriden students may not exceed seventy-five percent of the population at TEMS. There continues to be board discussion regarding the proposed provision of preference in the Magnet School lottery application process for siblings, children, or grandchildren of ACES employees. Mr. William Rice, the Assistant Executive Director, updated the Board on curriculum and instruction issues. He indicated that schedules are being prepared for Sback Administration. Students are working on science fair projects. Two students have made significant progress and are being transitioned back to their home district in Bridgeport. Mill Road students are celebrating being kind to others. WHIMS continues to work with Crayola as part of their arts integration initiative and WHIMS is in discussions with Southern Connecticut State University regarding a collaboration to house their reading center. A five fifty silver level staff in-service for verbal de-escalation training is being offered. The next ACES Governing Board meeting is scheduled for March fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. There are sixty-nine Wallingford students attending ACES programs.
Perfect. Thank you, Mrs. Levak. Any questions? Okay. Mr. Votto, before I move on on the agenda, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention something. Mr. Reynolds mentioned the gift from Choate School. I just wanted to reiterate that a little bit. No offense to you. I just felt, I want to make sure the public heard that. It was a thirty-seven thousand dollar donation to our school system, including iPads and MacBooks and IMAX. This is a great, great amount of expensive stuff that they donated and I think it just shows another, or demonstrates another time when Choate is trying to show that they are a good neighbor and they contribute to our community every day. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Yeah, all good. Moving along on our committee reports, Wintergreen Magnet's School Steering Committee, Mrs. Latour.
I was not able to attend that meeting due to its rescheduling, so the next meeting is next week.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, School to Career Representative Business Think Tank. I always jump between Mrs. Costelli and Dr. Menzo.
We didn't have an official meeting.
Okay.
However, I do want to bring, it kind of goes along the same vein. We did have a meeting last Friday with medical professionals in the community. So we had Hartford Hospital, we had Masonic, we had people from Workforce, we had people from Quinnipiac and Community Healthcare Group because we're talking about our pipeline program that we're going to be working on for our students who get their CNA pinning this spring to go and be part of a three semester program where they would do a paid apprenticeship in the fall at one of these local agencies. So we wanted an initial meeting just to see, kind of see if we're on the right page. Are we doing the right thing? Resounding yes. Hartford Hospital gave us some great ideas about potential
Partners.
New partnerships and looking at students who are really geared towards technology that might not want to be with a patient but wants to work in a lab and do high-level analysis using data and technology. They said they can't find people to fill those positions at all. So Mary Ellen Pettit, one of our two medical careers CNA teachers, was there from Sheehan and she spoke about how we're looking at pharmacy tech and there was just a tremendous amount of exchange of knowledge and information. So we're actually scheduling a follow-up meeting and it's going to be at Sheehan High School in the Medical Careers Section to show them what we have, what we do there. And then the idea is to have them sign up. We're going to have the Department of Labor there so they could sign up to become a pre-apprenticeship program. So then we become an official program that then we can offer to our graduating students from the pinning program. So our CNA students that are juniors going into senior year, they would have a summer semester where they would do job shadowing, fall semester apprenticeship where they would get paid, and then a spring semester where they would be able to work on their resumes either for a post-high school experience in college or a technical school based on that experience or actually get a job, part-time, full-time, in one of these facilities. So I appreciate Roxanne was there to support the initiative.
You know what was amazing, as a, just kind of observing and being there and supporting, in theory, but there aren't a lot of high schools that are providing these opportunities. We're really unique that way and that is, and I know, Mrs. Corso, you support my way of thinking and other board members, too, but I know we talk about this, is the idea of tangible skills, that we're providing tangible skills to our students that when they're graduating from high school. And one thing that I learned that day, which I never realized, is even if there are young folks that are continuing on, let's say, to become a pharmacist or other medical careers, they need to put in CNA hours. They have to show evidence that they've worked at that level, patient level. So for many of these students, that's a box they can check because they did it, they put in the hours at the high school level. Very unusual. So, you know, it made me proud, knowing that we're offering this kind of programming that provides tangible skills and then we're going one step further beyond the CNA, again, advanced programming that our students are graduating with credentials, literally credentials. And I always refer back, Dr. Menzo made this a bunch of years back, and I remember this when we started with really, Wallingford One Hundred, the idea of what value does our diploma provide? Is it inherently, if you graduate from Yale or Harvard, there's inherent value. We, and you, that's been your mantra and your team's mantra is, when you graduate from a Wallingford school system, our diploma has value and tangible value if our students take advantage of the opportunities that are afforded to them. So it was a really aha moment for me and it was a proud moment for me as Wallingford Board of Ed to be there and just to listen to how the heads were nodding, you know, in the audience from these folks that they're thrilled to partner with us. So it was a really good meeting, so.
And connected to this, Ms. Raciyo, before the meeting gave me, there's a legislative proposal regarding the changing, excuse me?
I don't understand it, that's why I gave you.
Well, basically, what happens is there's a shortage area of these teachers.
Right.
So they're not going with a DSAP, meaning a durational shortage, you know, provisional, but they're looking at, can teachers who teach in some of the technical schools, which don't necessarily have the full certification, not, they have certification, but not necessarily does it transition always into comprehensive high schools. So they're looking to make it more flexible because that's one of the concerns because they are beginning to listen to some of the shortage areas in our state and one of the two major areas besides advanced manufacturing, which that's the other part of our pipeline.
Right.
The other part is the medical careers. So they're trying to broaden because we actually, after the meeting, it was ironic, Mary Ellen Pettit, the teacher who was there, she said, she's always getting calls from other districts to have, you know, to poach her, to steal her and go to their district because there aren't enough certified teachers in this area. So they're trying to make it more accessible. That's at least the understanding that I got from the people I've spoken to. But that, and that's going to be a continued opportunity for us to, you know, to be aware of, that we need to make sure that, and I think we do a nice job. We keep our program size appropriate. We don't try to oversize our program. We try to give them as many resources as possible. I think they enjoy the relationships that we have with real professionals at Masonic and Gaylord and Midstate. We have highly qualified people that they're working with. And then to be able to expand the program, there was a great, the woman from Quinnipiac was fantastic because she said, you know, we have this, all this new research center and she's like, we should have your students being, you know, coming over as seniors, your science students, doing research in our labs. So it was, it was a forty-five minute to fifty-five minute meeting.
That's the beauty of it. It wasn't a super long. It was a real down and dirty meeting, but it accomplished a ton of things in a positive way, so it was.
And I do have to thank Joe Mara, who is part of the Hubcap Wallingford Board as well as EDC. He really helped us facilitate getting the people in the room. So I want to really thank him for that. And then Rob Covey with, Rob Covey got right on it.
That's true.
I don't think I was in my car and there were emails already to all these people thanking them for coming.
Rob gave his business card to every single person there. It was fantastic.
And he already has a conference call.
He networked beautifully.
He has a conference call with the Executive Director of CVS for programming. That's next week. He already has a call set up for them, so. It was a good moment.
Yeah, it really was.
And again, these are, no matter if the students go into workforce right after high school or four or six years later, depending on their trajectory in terms of college, they'll have a deeper understanding and a deeper appreciation of the career that they intend to go into, which is always important, so.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I lost my point. Okay, PTAC.
It was supposed to be tonight, so we don't have a meeting, so it won't be too much.
That's fine. Item ten point five, Plan of Conservation Development. Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing new.
Well, that's a surprise. Okay, ten point six, Food Service Strategic Plan. Mr. Mancher.
We did not meet in January. We are scheduled to meet next week. And some of the things we're working on is we continue to work and plan the Elementary Junior Chef's Competition. And we're looking into the survey that we talked about last week. And also, we are moving forward with piloting the two elementary breakfast programs in May.
Perfect. Thank you. And then I'm going to combine ten point seven and ten point eight for Mr. Deptula, Stage Lighting Renovation, and our four school window replacement.
We have nothing new to report this month.
Okay, it's all good. Item eleven, Old Business. I do not believe we have any. Item twelve, Instructional Committee. Mrs. Corso, you are up.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm going to go right into these motions.
Sure, please do.
So I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept with regret the retirement of James Franchizi, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Franchizi has been a high school assistant principal from April nineteen ninety-nine, then a curriculum coordinator for Humanities from August two thousand and fourteen, for a total of twenty, twenty point five years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Next motion, I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept with regret the resignation of Michael Lavoy, effective March sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Lavoy has been a science teacher since November ninth, two thousand and eleven. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Next one, I make a motion that a leave of absence for Barbara Mintonello be approved without pay and in accordance with a provision of the current teacher's contract for one week in March two thousand and nineteen.
Second the motion?
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention. Motion is denied. And lastly, I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the appointment of the following candidate to a coaching position, the girls' field hockey coach at Sheehan, Katie Lynn Gill.
Please second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on, a presentation of our revised policy with the use of tobacco and substitute devices.
So, this is the second read for this policy. It is presented as it was at the Instructional Committee. Any, any questions or comments? Okay.
So, just, just to be clear, I want to make sure that more for TV land, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mrs. Latour, but we do three reads. This is our second read for all of these, so no motions are needed, but just simply it's an opportunity, if board members have any concerns, questions, it's an, one of three opportunities to articulate them. We'll have one more read, and then it'll go into our policies as updates. Sorry to interrupt again.
No worries. Thank you.
Twelve point six is the presentation of proposed revised policy four-two-one-two dot four-two, Drug and Alcohol Testing and Training for Drivers of School Buses and Student Transportation Vehicles. We did add the word training to the title of this policy per our conversation last week. And then I also did speak with Kathy Nealon in regards to the questions about EpiPens being on the school buses. That is not a requirement. It is just purely a requirement for the training of bus drivers if there is an EpiPen on board and a student, you know, has an issue. So, there, there is not a need to have the EpiPens on the school buses. She was also not aware, I know, Mrs. Raccio, you asked about any programs that might provide free EpiPens. She was not aware of any for transportation companies. She's only aware of the ones that we have in our school buildings. So, I did want to at least follow up on those two things.
Thank you. Okay, next one, twelve seven, the proposed deletion of policy, the responsibility for student conduct, and deleting of policy, student discipline. Any questions or discussion on that? Okay, and the last one, a presentation of proposed new policy of student discipline.
This is the second read for this policy. Again, it's a rather long and dense policy. I appreciate the comments and questions that I've received thus far, and at this point, no changes have been made since the first read that was presented at the Instructional Committee. So, any other future questions, I will respond to in a timely manner to get that taken care of before the last read.
Okay, perfect.
I did want to make note, I did not put the service animal policy on for a second read because in researching some of the questions from our last meeting, our attorney, Shipman Goodman, had provided a new policy that they created that wasn't there when this first one was drafted. So, I have some work to do on Thursday morning with our policy committee, just in terms of recommended language change, which is why I left it off this agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thanks so much. Item thirteen, I'm sorry, excuse me, Operations Committee, Mrs. LeVac.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
The Operations Committee conducted budget meetings on January twenty-third, January thirtieth, and February sixth. A regular Operations Committee meeting took place on February eleventh, with the minutes of the January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting being approved with corrections at that meeting. At the regular Operations Committee meeting on February eleventh, the Board of Education Financial Report for January two thousand and nineteen and the Cafeteria Report for January two thousand and nineteen were reviewed in committee and accepted under the consent agenda this evening. The financial forecast through January two thousand and nineteen was reviewed with a projected unencumbered balance of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars noted at this time. The Cafeteria Financial Reports for January two thousand and nineteen were reviewed. In January, a profit of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars was realized. It was noted that the first healthy foods check was received. Sales are up, and there were six more serving days this January as compared to last year. Reimbursements for the federal lunch and breakfast programs have increased. Mr. Deptula provided a maintenance facilities update for the board. Consensus was taken on the proposed school calendars for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school years. On January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, the first budget workshop took place. The board reviewed the proposed sustained budget and then reviewed the strategic plan prioritization list. On January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, the board reviewed the food service budget and reviewed and discussed the strategic plan priority list once again. Additional questions were posed by the board and were answered. On February sixth, two thousand and nineteen, the board, board took consensus on the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty food service budget. Additionally, the board took consensus on a percentage increase of two point five percent for the budget. The total budget request is a hundred and four million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars. The request includes the sustained budget and strategic plan items such as the addition of one full-time special education teacher to be shared between the high school Inspire Program and the Iced Tea Program, one full-time English language teacher, one full-time medical careers teacher, and a part-time communication specialist. There might be a couple of other things to.
Just to, I just want to make sure for clarification, I apologize, but the first two positions you mentioned, the special ed teacher and the EL teacher are in the sustained portion.
Okay.
So, that's part of the two point four. And then the point one additional is the medical careers teacher and the part-time communication specialist, just to differentiate. So, I apologize, I don't, not to correct, but I just want to make sure that it's clear.
That's perfectly fine.
And what's going to happen is that this week, I, like I always do, parents at the elementary level will receive information about how does the budget impact their students. The middle school parents will receive theirs, and the high school parents will receive theirs, and they'll be posted on the website. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. Thanks.
That's fine. All right. Item thirteen point two, I make a motion that the board approved two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget in the amount of one hundred and four million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars.
I second it.
Discussion on the motion? May we?
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment if I can. I just want to congratulate and thank Dr. Menzo and all of his staff that put together this budget. They start in, I don't even know, October, and to get to this place, I, I even am looking at surrounding towns, I'm really proud of this budget. I'm proud of the work that they put in and the thoughtfulness. It's a, I think it's a really, it's, it's a very appropriate budget. It is not asking for a lot. It is, I think we're being prudent and responsible and respectful to, to the local taxpayers because obviously they're impacted by all our budget requests in the community. So, I know the amount of time that goes in, not only from board members, once we get it, but to even get it to the place that our conversations are really almost simple at this point because the heavy lifting occurs in October, November, December, when you guys are thinking about how you're going to present a reasonable and a sustainable budget to us. And you, you've got it down to a science and, but I know it's not easy, and I just want to take the time to say thank you, Dr. Menzo, to you and these, everybody around this table. And, and then at the, even at the, your principals and, and your, everybody, everybody has a stake in this, and everybody at each school makes up their budget, and it starts at what's going on and who's, who, how we can fine-tune it. How can we improve it? How can we be minimalist but yet deliver the best education to our students possibly? So, finding that balance takes so much effort, and again, I think sometimes it comes across as effortless and, you know, seamless, but it isn't. It's constant conversation, constant analysis, and, and really making tough decisions sometimes. So, I just wanted to take a second and say thank you to your staff at every level for the commitment they make to make our jobs frankly easier, I think, so.
No, and I, I just want to thank you for complimenting the whole team.
Yeah, it really is.
Because it's every level.
But because you've created that with lean, I, I mean, that's.
Well, but it's everybody working together.
It is.
And I have to say, we even have, be prepared because next year we already have some changes. So, in terms of what we want to add and, and really look at things a little even more, I think, clearly and more effectively. So, each year, because of the deep rich conversations we have at all levels with teachers, with pairs, with administrators, with parents, whatever it may be, it enhances it. But I, I thank you for that, but I also thank the collaboration of the board, and even though there were eighty-three questions.
Only gave you half.
The eighty-three questions, they do make us think, and as I shared with you, we answer those not in a vacuum. We put those in a, in a document that we all are working on together, sometimes stepping on each other and correcting each other's spelling and then erasing each other's things because we do that, not that Ms. Latour ever and I do that to each other. But the thing is that it's a collaborative effort, and I, and I think that that's something that I think you as a board are a collaborative effort, but then it's as a district and as a team, and I really, I'm, I'm proud to be part of that team, so, thank you.
So, I'm going to go with Patty, and I'm sorry, I usurped you. This is your part of the meeting. I apologize, Mrs. LeVac. The control in me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Votto and then Mrs. Purcell.
Are we still discussing the motion?
Yes, we are.
I'm just going to ask if we are going to have a roll call.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, thank you making the job easier, but the other thing that you do that makes it really easy is you're so, you're transparent, and so many people in the community see this budget. So, it's like, we, it's already been sold, we don't have to do all that, and that makes it really nice, and I just want to say, that doesn't happen everywhere, so thank you.
For sure.
Other remarks on the motion?
I just wanted to, I want to go back and clarify so that everybody knows, our sustained services budget represents a two point four percent increase, correct?
Correct.
And our strategic plan is, is a tenth of, of a percent increase. And I think that's significant to point out, that in order to sustain our services, we're asking for two point four percent, and in order to better our services, we're only asking for a tenth of a percent. That's all I can say about that.
Well said.
No, thank you, and that was, that was why I brought that up earlier, so thank you for reiterating that. I also just would like to say, we just got, and I'll, next week will be better, so I'll send it out to you there next week or the, or following week. We just got the listing from CAE. They do, CAPS and CAE do a whole listing of all budget requests throughout the state. It's a very intriguing document. There's tens, there's eights, surrounding areas are no less than three point five. So, again, two point four, I wish we could go sustained lower. I would love to have sustained a two, but I do appreciate the fact that where we are because, and there are some that are lower than us, but they're much smaller communities, and they also have other different scenarios. But I will definitely send, once it gets more populated, there were only about, I want to say maybe eighteen districts that reported thus far, once it gets more populated, I send that out to every year, but I'll send it out again.
Ms. Raccio.
Does that document, that's what the ask was, do they ever update that when the budget numbers come in? Can we see that?
Yes.
Like April or May?
I think I said, it, well, yeah, it's probably, it's more, it's closer to June because some of them have referendum, and they don't have one, coming from a district that prior to this that we would have opportunities.
That would be helpful.
So, yeah, sure.
Mr. Votto.
Dr. Menzo, in your, in your discussion before, you mentioned that the budget will, parents in each level, at each level will see how the budget impacts their children.
Correct.
Is it just on the website?
No, 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 we send out a mass email. So, there'll be an email sent out, we usually send it out through the principals. So, the elementary principals will send out my K five message, the middle school principals will send out the middle school, the high school principals will send out the high school, but then we give them the links that they could see everybody's. Because some will get multiple emails because they have kids at different level, but it's always on the website too. We've been doing this now for the last, I want to say, three or four years.
You want to find people.
Yeah, well, the key thing is that we just want, because when they look at a big budget, if, and you can't really, it's a big number, so how does it impact my child? So, that's why we divide it up and say, okay, if you're an elementary parent, this is what it means to you, the sustained budget as well as the strategic. And then I tell them what are the next steps, and then middle school, same thing, high school, same thing.
Further discussion on the motion? Or questions or comments? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call?
Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Corso?
Yes.
Ms. LeVac?
Yes.
Mrs. Purcell?
Yes.
Mrs. Raccio?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, well done. Item fourteen, New Business, I do not believe we have any. Item fifteen, Administration Report, Dr. Menzo, you are up.
Yes, and this is a spoiler alert, but this is going to be coming out to everybody. We have a lot going on in the next three weeks in the district, and I just want to make sure that I get some of these out to the community in this forum. Starting with Tuesday, we do have the Credit for Life. Very, very pleased that we have over seventy-five volunteers again. This is a lot of volunteer support for this activity to take place. So, we're very fortunate, talked to Chick-fil-A again, they're donating the food for the volunteers. So, and actually, we have some exciting news, I won't announce it and steal their thunder, but we have some exciting news from Chick-fil-A for our students that work for them. There's, there's some really good opportunities there. So, that's on Tuesday during the day. The twenty-seventh is the Resource Fair at Xandry Stillwood Inn. Again, I think I, we're very fortunate, we had great parental support, we had great staff support through Lisa Baker, Donna Curtis, and all of the PPS clerical staff, working hard on this, so I think it's going to be a great event.
What day's the?
That's on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Which is Wednesday.
Yep.
And what is happening?
I just have to keep the days in, in order. Then the twenty-eighth through the, the second, so the twenty-eighth of February through the second of March is Footloose at Moran. Then Cinderella is the following weekend at Sheehan, so it's the Rogers and Hammerstein version of Cinderella. On the fifth, though, earlier in the week, is the Film Festival, which is the Step Film Festival for DAG and Moran, and I believe it's at DAG, so that's another activity. And you'll get all the times and it's going on on my blog and everything, but I just figured getting dates out to people is important. The sixth is the Spelling Bee, the Adult Spelling Bee at Moran Middle School in the evening, so come spell. And then the following week, we have, the twelfth is the Invention Convention, and then on the fourteenth is the Wellness Fair. So, that's just getting you through the next three weeks, and there's a, yeah, the fourteenth is the Wellness Fair at Mark T. Sheehan High School. So, there's a lot of opportunity to get involved in the community, with the community, to get involved in our district. On the thirteenth will be the first night, I'm sorry, what, which one, Mr. Votto?
Twenty-seventh, I missed that one.
The Resource Fair is the twenty-seventh. Again, you'll get all this.
All right.
On the thirteenth of March, we're going to start, it'll hopefully be our first week of a five-week advanced manufacturing pipeline for veterans. So, we're working with recent returned veterans through a variety of organizations to have them go through a similar pipeline program that we had this fall, where we employed nine of our thirteen graduates of the program. So, we're working again with the same manufacturers. This is through Hubcap, Wallingford, Adult Ed, as well as Workforce Alliance. So, we're going to be working with Mr. Messier from the Veterans Affairs Association for Wallingford to get this messaged out as well as other communication areas. So, we're proud of this because we had great success, and we wanted to make sure, and we're also working with a nonprofit organization from a former graduate of Wallingford Public Schools who was in Iraq, and he and his, his bunkmate in Iraq have set up a nonprofit. And so, they, what they do is they, he'll come and they'll actually offer the veterans some symbol coding activities and some technology skill development activities during the five weeks. We also are going to have each week different resources for veterans that they might be unaware of, that they have access to, so be it special housing, mortgage rates, or insurance. So, we're going to try to bring those resources because sometimes they don't always know about all those resources. So, we're very excited about this. It's another step in the right direction, you know, in terms of trying to benefit our community. I know sometimes people wonder why we're dealing with post-high school or post-graduates, but the thing is, if we don't keep these businesses in town, fully staffed, they're going to find another place to go, and then our two point four percent is going to seem like an eight point four percent because the community's grand list isn't going to be there. We also are in the process of recruiting, like we had the meeting this past Friday for medical careers. We're recruiting even more advanced manufacturers because now this summer, we're going to be[1773.41] we're going to be doing a program for students going into their senior year, doing a paid apprenticeship in the fall as seniors. So we're very fortunate, we have a couple of new businesses coming to town. And they're actually, we're trying to recruit them to come to this event. Actually, we heard today, because Mr. Mara is helping us again, they are coming to this event. Mr. Ryan, Tim Ryan, of course, EDC is helping us with this. So really trying to show the businesses that Wallingford is a place to come, because everyone wants them to be successful. We, and we, we need them to be successful. So it's a little bit different, it's a, I know it's a paradigm shift, but it helps our students, because it puts them in a good career path, and it also helps our businesses and our community. So I just can't thank everyone enough for their support throughout the community. Again, Mr. Mara, Mr. Ryan, the mayor for his support and, and their hard work. Again, there's a lot going on in the district, and we're, we're definitely, we're in full gear. I think that, I was a little jealous of my neighbors who had the day off today in West Hartford, and other people at the table who had the two days. But, you know, we're, we're moving forward, and again, our teaching staff is working very hard, as well as all of our staff. This is a tough time of year, there's that February phenomenon, where I don't know if it's kind of, I don't know, it gets a little freaky sometimes in terms of just, I know there was a, the whatever moon today, or whatever.
The snow moon.
And, you know, but everybody's, everybody's working hard. Everybody's working in the right direction for students, and I appreciate everyone's support, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. So announcements, so we've got kind of an interesting march for meeting schedules, locations, and dates and whatnot, so they're not our normal necessarily routine. We, we will start with March 4th is our Instruction Committee, which would be held here at the Board of Education Conference Room at 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM, right? We are, is that going to, are we looking to change to 6:30, or? Okay.
Well, we're, we're, we're doing, we're, I think we're going to keep the instructional, we have to make, we have to make a decision, but the instructional, I think we're going to keep the instructional for March at 6.
At 6, okay.
And then, the 11th is Operations, because that's the facility meeting, where we're going to get the update.
Right.
And that was going to be at 6, because we anticipate that to have potentially some questions.
A longer meeting, yeah, sure.
And that's at the Ag Science Community Room.
Okay, yeah, I, I, that's my part.
But then, the budget, the regular board meeting is going to go back to 6:30.
Okay, well, we've got it at 6, okay, so 6:30, okay. Okay, so, let's start again. Yeah, I have been usurped, and that doesn't happen often, so.
Well, I just.
It's all good, Dr. Menzo. So March 4th, here, 6:00 PM. March 11th is our Operations, as articulated. We'll be at, actually, our Ag Science Community Room at Lyman Hall, which the bulk of it will be spent at 6:00 PM. We'll be spent talking about our facilities updates and where we're headed in that. And then, this is also a change, our televised meeting, that's also here? At the Board of Educ, because we're changing it, is March 18th. And I just want to put it out there right now, both Mrs. Purcell and I will not be at that meeting, because it, because it did change. We both have a, not together, but different vacation plans, that we planned it so that we wouldn't miss the meeting, but it's all good. And so, March 18th will be the televised Board of Education meeting here at 100 South Turnpike Road at 6:30. And then, unless there's anything else for the good of the order?
I just want to clarify for all board members. So board meetings going forward after March, all meetings, we're going to go back to 6:30.
Yeah.
Just to be consistent, because there's.
Right, that's what I thought.
I thought I saw 6.
Yeah, but.
Well, I had put out 6 o'clock, but I think that there's been.
For, for board members, 6:30 seems like a better time to start.
6:30 seems to be a better time, so that's why, so.
It's fine.
We need to be consistent for posting, so just doing that.
So March 18th on the agenda says 6, and you're saying 6:30. I just want to clarify which it is, it's going to be 6:30?
6:30, on the 18th.
But the other two meetings are at 6?
Okay, but then, starting in April, Kath, it'll be 6:30. We'll be consistently at 6:30. So sorry for the confusion for people, but we'll get it together. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Votto.
Our Operations Meeting, the Facilities Group will, the company will come to us and just give us an update.
Well, they're going to give you, they're going to give you the information as, I've shared that option 3, remember there was 3, which was.
That's right.
Replicate both schools the exact same way, 3, that was keep them the way they are, but the upgrades. And they're going to update the numbers of also option 1, because we had shared with the board that we felt we've been here, and I got, actually, I received an email today, which is ironic, that we included air conditioning in option 1, because we felt that that was a necessary upgrade. So they're going to come back with refined option 1 with air conditioning, option 3 with Part A, Part B, and then you, the, hopefully, you'll have conversation, you decide where you're going to go, how far you're going to go, narrowing it down. And then, they could put together the survey, which then would go out to the community. I'll send out another reminder the week of the 4th for families and staff. Again, reiterating the process, reiterating the timelines. I know it sounds repetitive, but I don't think we could over-communicate, because we oftentimes get accused of not communicating. But this is probably, this will probably be about the sixth or seventh time that I've communicated the same message.
A lot of times.
So I hope people are, I, I think most people are paying attention.
So we will narrow it down that night.
I think that, that's what you kind of need to, you need to get to that point, because we can't.
To do the survey.
Yeah, to do the survey.
Mr. Ross, and then, I don't know, Patty, did you?
That was my question.
Okay, Mr. Ross.
I'm just curious, who's bumping us out of the tunnel, out of the Parisi Chambers?
I think there's a variety, there's a variety of, of committees that.
So traditionally, Ray, we're the 4th Monday, and that's our block, because we're changing our meeting times, we're really infringing on other people's, you know, it's kind of, honestly, that, the Town Hall is used quite a bit for different committee meetings. So that's our slated time is the 4th Monday. We chose to change our meeting schedule, so hence, it, it bumped us, if you will. So that, that was the case for this, for this month and next month.